This is the June 5th, 2019 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. First on the agenda is the secretary's report of May 8th, 2019. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions? If not, we need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Acceptance.
All in favor? Next item is the financial report, budget.
Yes, this is a snapshot as of today. Less than a month left of this year. We do have two and a half more payroll periods in F-119. And the amount that you're seeing is what's available. That will be completely spent out by the end. And we'll actually be overspending in this line by about $600. And it will be covered by a transfer from the operating line. And that will not require approval from the board, so we won't need to meet again to review all that. So that will end up leaving us with about $1,500 in the operating line. But we're still waiting on the final Eversource water and foam bills for F-119. So I have no idea what those will be. I mean, ballparks maybe, but... In other words, we're... I've kind of slowed down the spending from the operating line just so that we don't run into any issues there.
Questions from beyond budget? Do you need a motion to accept?
Motion to accept. For what? Acceptance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next are the building updates.
So the flagpole is here, in the basement. It's been here for a couple of weeks. They had to mark the area to be okay by DaySafe. And last I heard, it was able to be installed any time after today. June 5th was the date. So I would imagine that we'll be seeing that go up in the next couple of weeks.
That's good news.
And as far as the electric car charging stations go, I mentioned that to you at the last meeting. There's been a bit of back and forth, nothing to do with the library, but a bit of back and forth between Jen and Eric's office and the company offering the grant and Eversource. It looks like it's still happening. But as of last week, it looks like we're only going to have one here at the library, and it will be in the northwest corner of the parking lot. And that's all I have.
I was gonna say, I'm a lot better. I'm thrilled to hear that.
Yes.
That's good news.
But those are my two big things. I don't know if anyone else has any other things or questions?
Nothing on the computers at all?
No, the person at sales who would be coordinating a lot of that has been on vacation. So I figured I would just wait till she gets back before really getting into that. So I hopefully will have quotes for you to approve whenever we can.
And the pergola for the deck?
Okay, we were just discussing that. I called, I went to Home Depot, but they don't have it. They don't carry it there. They ship it.
Oh, okay.
So I have... I wrote down for Home Depot, BJ's also has it, Costco has it, and Amazon. And all the prices are different. They go anywhere from $1,800 up until $32. Depending on it, they're all Louis Vuittons, but they're all different names. Some will move it. Aberdeen is the fancy one. That's over $3,000. But it was around $2,000, around $2,000. Depending on where you get it from.
And they were all the same size?
Yeah, they're all 12 by 12 with the louvers that you can move. And we were wondering how they moved it. There's a stick that you just... And it just turns it.
Oh, so that seems easy.
Yeah.
That seems easy.
They're... They have like three different sections, so you don't have... It's not just one section. It's three different sections that you can just...
What were the four places?
Home Depot, BJ's, Costco, and Amazon. But I think you'd have to be a member for BJ's or Costco, but I figured somebody's got to be a member. I also did the one without the move, without having to move, without louvers. And Home Depot got for $1,490.
I think the big louvers are a good feature. Especially the deck though. I mean, do you think?
The big one? Oh, then there is one that's 12 by 24. I didn't know how big you wanted it.
Okay.
Yeah, if you wanted, well, almost the whole thing. That was $2,320. But that's... The louvers don't move. They just...
They said it's a Costco for $400.
Yeah. But the fancy one, I mean, it is nice. It's got the round post instead of the square post. Now, it comes with it, but you still have to buy things.
Right, the hardware and the... But would we have to buy all that additional material?
It depends. If we're installing it, I mean, yeah. Anyway, we have, right.
So even if Jim is...
Those are squares for that. Square, four by four.
He fits at my stand right in, yeah. I don't know. It just said that you need them, but I don't think you buy them. Must be the square one must fit in it because it's wider, bigger.
So maybe we can show that to Jim and see what his suggestion is on which one to go with. And then he...
I think he does, actually. He was here the other day, and I actually think he does. He... Where his group put the deck, you know, they built the deck, his group. He wants to make sure that the deck isn't... Something doesn't happen to the deck as a result. I think he'd rather take responsibility for installing something like this. But when that could happen, I mean, he's pretty stretched out right now. So I don't know whether or not that could happen soon. But he would like to be a part of it, especially when it comes time to cut the deck, to put the posts into the ground below the deck.
I would assume that he would do it.
Yeah. Yeah. But I think he would like to have some say in what goes there in terms of... So I think it certainly wouldn't be a bad idea to show it to him. I mean, if you leave it with me, then I can show it to him. Whatever is easier. Thank you.
I think he's installing it. He should get to choose which one.
Yeah. Or just have some input, you know, into it. Maybe he might have a recommendation.
The Camelot on the app, I printed, I went in further and I got more information about it because that was one. That is three of them, so I'll get that one.
Okay.
So if you can look at the Camelot, and then it shows more about it.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. That's a lot of options. I didn't even know that many existed. I heard a lot.
Yeah, I was driving by the place in the bedroom the other day where they have a pergola set up outside. And it looked really nice to see people sitting over there having a cup of coffee. No, I wish it were by yard. No, I want a wide open yard.
Does anybody have any other doubling things or things to talk about? No? Okay. Waiving processing fees?
So back in March, when we discussed the circulation policy draft the first time, I had mentioned wanting to waive the processing fee for lost books. And we then never really talked about it. When we... In the circulation policy, it doesn't say anything about a processing fee in the lost book section, which I think I had done intentionally in the hopes that we'd get to this point. And then it sort of dropped off my radar. But it came back onto my radar. And so I figured I'd bring it up again. We're charging people, just to refresh, and then also some things appear with this in March. But we're charging, when there is a lost item, we're charging patrons face value for the item, which is sometimes more than what we're actually paying for a replacement cost of an item because we do get a slight discount. So the $2 almost seems erroneous to me. And also, when we have someone who's present and willing to pay for a lost item, I feel like adding $2 on just causing maybe additional tension at the counter. So I'd love to see it go. But I would need, since it's money that comes in for the revolving fund, I would need you to make a motion and ensure to be excited and all that good stuff. But if you want to have a discussion about it too, I'm more than happy to.
How much money would you save in a year?
How many? Hold on.
As I mentioned, back in March, we're often waiving the processing fee for people to try to help them out. So I don't even have an accurate number. I mean, maybe we're talking like more than $50 in processing fees. I mean, it's the very... Depends how much we take in in lost book charges. I mean, ideally, we would like to not take lost book charges because we would like people to return the items that they borrowed from us. So...
What happens?
For the whole year, no more than that. I would say it's probably closer to like 30 or 40.
What happens then if they say, "There's a..." You know, we had somebody here who lost a lot of books.
Mm-hmm. So nothing happens. If they don't want to use the library anymore, nothing happens. If they try to get a new library card, then they're blocked from getting a new library card throughout the network. So that's... What happens really is ultimately up to them. But, you know, most times people are paying them. And the ones that aren't being paid, we don't see those people again. And I don't know where they go. They just, you know, are never to use a library again.
Right. They can never use the library again.
Until they take... Well, until they take care of those charges. If they take care of the charges...
But they're not gonna have a charge.
What's that?
Well, we're not gonna have a charge.
No, no, no. They're still gonna be charged for the lost books. They just won't be charged an additional $2 processing fee for the lost book. So we're just... Yeah. No, no, no. Sorry about that. No, they'll still be charged for the lost items. So it might not just be books, DVDs. But currently, when they get charged the face value for the lost item, there's a $2 processing fee that's tacked on. From way back when, you know, you actually had to then process the material, you had to pay for processing supplies to get the material ready to go out on the shelves. We don't do a lot of the processing anymore. A lot of the items come already processed from the vendors. So a lot of that is... And the supplies that we do get are so inexpensive over the course of a fiscal year that the $2 just seems like it's adding insult to injury. So no, we would still be charging people for lost items thinking, and they may have their... Just we would be waiving the $2 processing fee from the lost item. And really, it's... It could be $30, $40 a year we're talking about, if that... If that. Because like I said, we're often waiving the $2 fee already. I just would like to make it official that it's often that there's no confusion among staff.
Make a motion to drop the processing fee.
Thank you.
Sandra?
All in favor?
Thank you for clarifying that. Sorry. That's a good point.
2019 Summer Reading Program.
Yeah, so I wanted to just take a couple of minutes, go over this all with you because the next time that we meet, Summer Reading will already be in full swing. Figured this was a good day to do that. The program officially kicks off next Friday, which is June 14th. It'll run for the last two weeks of June and then seven weeks, all of July and two weeks into August. So it's technically a nine-week program, which is about what we did last year. Usually, summer reading programs are incentive-based programs and then also special events programs. We're into the summer reading program umbrella. So we are doing incentive-based programs again this year for all ages. We have a Read and Beep program, which we launched last year for young kids. We have two categories for that. Preschool-age kids have their own category, and then K through 4 have their own category. And then we have the Scratch to Win program, which we did last year. We gave out the little scratch tickets once a week. If you come into the library and tell us about what you've been reading, we'll give you a scratch ticket. And that's for grades 5 to 8 in one category, and then teens and adults in another category. So also scratch. Also scratch, yeah. So it's just Read and Beep and Scratch to Win.
It's just run by a mass audience?
Yeah, because no. If not, they're not having to buy the ticket. So it's not like it's... It's just fun. There's no money-changing gimmicks.
There's an idea.
So... There is an idea, right?
There's an idea. There are all kinds of ideas coming out, gambling everywhere.
Yes, no, that's true. That's true.
What are some of the things that you scratched to win?
So Sandra and the rest of the staff have, for the past almost year, been collecting new books to include in the on-the-raffle prize part. When you scratch to win, you get to pick a prize is what, when you scratch. Either it's pick-a-prize or second chance. So if you're pick-a-prize, you get to go to the cart, and there's books. We're getting some gift cards, hopefully donated from the area businesses. We've got to have Make Your Own Smores Kits, which were very popular last year. And we get that through money from the friends, which is really awesome to us. And let's see if we get on there. Actually, we have a hockey puck from the Bruins that'll be on in one week. So there's a variety.
That's great, wow.
Some new DVDs. So there's a variety of things on there. And the adults and the teens who participated last year and the grades 5 through 8 kids who participated last year all had a great time with it. So it's open to anyone who wants to come in once a week or every other week and take a chance. And then the second chance drawings are Amazon gift cards. So who wouldn't want to win an Amazon gift card just for reading and visiting their library, right? It's very easy and fun. And very... Little work on the person, just the thing is you have to come in and talk to us and talk about it. And a lot of people who come in are hard to do enough, so...
Sounds fun.
It will be fun. So you're all welcome to join. I hope you do.
It's Wednesday, the last day of school, which is Saturday, so we'll be very busy.
Yep. We expect to be very busy Friday afternoon and Saturday. So we expect it, and we hope so. But I want people, if you are watching at home, to know it's not just for kids. There are a lot of things happening for adults too. So keep that in mind. And then quickly, just to go over some of the programs. We're continuing the music series on the back lawn that started last year. And we'll be doing that for seven weeks this year. So the first one is July 1st, and that runs through August 12th. And we have a little something for everyone. There's folk, jazz, contemporary. Some of the artists who performed last year are returning this year. But they're, I think, maybe only on two weeks. I would say there's five new acts and then maybe two repeats from last year. We had great crowds come out for that last year. Back Lawn, 6 o'clock on Monday nights.
That's what we do.
July 1st will be the first one, and it runs through August 12th.
Every week.
Every week, every Monday night, 6 o'clock. And weather permitting, we'll be on the back lawn. And if we can't be on the back lawn, we'll be in here. So fingers crossed. We lucked out. Yeah, we lucked out really well last year, so...
We got the electric back there.
The electric's all set, ready to go, thanks to D W. So we won't be calling them every week, asking them to come get any books from us this year, so... Which is a great help. Looking forward to that. We also do the weekly Family Storytime through the summer, which is on Wednesdays at 10:30. Bethany will also be doing a weekly Pajama Storytime on Thursday nights at 6:30. During one of those Pajama Storytimes, we'll be holding Fourth Annual Stuffed Animal Sleepover. If you don't know about our Stuffed Animal Sleepover program, that's a very popular program where you get to lead your stuffed animal for a night of fun in the library. And we'll be doing that on July 25th. If kids come to the Pajama Storytime that night, they're not required to lead a stuffed animal. They just want to come to the program and hear some stories, they can. But if they'd like to leave their stuffy... We have three years now of... We've proven what a great program this is, and we know what people look forward to all year, so...
What was the date?
That's gonna be Thursday, July 25th.
Take pictures, put the animals through, and the library's closed.
And they get up to all kinds of hydrates in the library. And then the next morning on Friday, participants will be able to come back into the library to pick up their stuffed animal. They'll get a little souvenir, the mate's festivities. And there'll be some little treats, little breakfast treats. So it's a great, very great program over the board. On Wednesday afternoons, we're gonna have programs for school-aged children beginning July 3rd and running through August 14th. We are doing a weekly Lego Club on Fridays at 2:00, beginning on June 21st. There'll be programs on most every Saturday throughout the summer. We'll have more info on that soon. Like I mentioned in my director's report, the full calendar will be out by the 14th. We do have like last minute things we're adding in. But there's basically something happening every day here at the library all summer long for all ages. And we really want to make sure that the Acushnet residents especially are aware of all of the wonderful programs that will be happening here for free all summer long. And we know we couldn't do it without the support of the friends of the Acushnet Public Library. So we thank the friends greatly for all of their efforts to make this year's program a success. And staff's done a tremendous job of coming up with ideas and different things we can do to make this, hopefully, the best summer we've had yet. So we're really looking forward to it. Oh, and the theme I didn't mention is... It's a national theme. We don't pick the theme. But the theme this year is universal stories. And that's partly to highlight stories, but also to highlight the 15th anniversary of the Apollo 11 moon landing. So we will be doing moon landing-related programs throughout the summer.
Do you have anything you could use, so you could rub your hands?
Well, that's one of the reasons why I brought this up. Because if any of you were around on a Monday evening and you'd like to pop by the library around 5:30, 5:45 and see if Sandra needs a hand setting anything up for the concerts, that'd be great. If you're in the area. Sometimes also, as you know, the parking lot can be pretty crowded. So it doesn't hurt to have people, you know, just letting patrons know that our spots still in the back or if there are no more spots in the back, you're gonna have to park out on little roads. So if you're around and you'd like to stop by, then you can bring your lawn chair and enjoy some music out on the lawn with us. So keep that in mind. We're also gonna set up the giant games on the lawn on the night of the concerts. We did that last year with the big Connect Four and the kind of fashion blinking on all those lawn games.
The bean bags.
There's a gender. And we are hoping to have some volunteers, which we think we have in place for that, to help set those up. But a few extra hands certainly would be helpful, particularly on the Monday nights. Or we are setting up a finale party on Tuesday, August 13th. That will start probably around 5:30. And if you're around that evening, we're hoping for a really good turnout. We certainly could use as much help as we can get. But I'll have more info on that soon. There's... That really isn't put together at all. Tuesday, August 13th, probably starting around 5:30 to 7:30.
Kids getting cold, ice cream, please?
So Acushnet Creamery is supporting the program again this year. First 150 kids to sign up will get a coupon for an ice cream at Acushnet Creamery. And then any child, and that's eighth grade and under, who completes the program will get a coupon for a small sundae at the end of the summer program. So yeah, Acushnet Creamery's been outstanding to us every year. And it seems that almost anything we ask for, they're more than willing to help. And they're just an awesome community partner, not just to us. I know they help out other charities with different programs and...
So is it?
Yes, yeah. So it's just awesome that they do that. And we appreciate them great, so... So that would be great. But other than that, it's gonna be a full summer for sure. We'll see how it goes. But we're all excited for it here. We had our staff meeting last Friday on May 31st so that the staff and I could go through everything and do some brainstorming. We had some ideas that hadn't come up yet that came up during the staff meeting. And it was fun. And I think they're all looking forward to it. I know I am, so... Yeah, anytime you can stop by and help out with anything, they'll come to go for it. And if things come up, I'll probably send out an email saying, "Hey, this just came up." If you're available, stop by. That'd be a fun chance for you to see the cool things we do. Yeah, it's true, if you're looking for.
That sounds like a good one.
Great job.
Thanks. I'm really excited about this one. I really am. I mean, it's a no-brainer, really. I mean, it's summer, and it's a great time to have people coming in. But it's really, I feel like... I do feel like the staff's done gone above and beyond. And I'll include myself in that when I say we've gone above. We all have really put together... It's like, how are we gonna top this next year? Like, I'm already catching that, like, oh, man, how's this gonna go? We'll figure it out.
Sounds like it's gonna be good.
I think so.
Anybody else have anything on the summer reading?
No, summer reading, but for book clubs. My girlfriend's down in Florida. She's in a book club in there. And she has... They have books in a bag. Have you ever heard of that?
Yeah. There are some libraries in the network that have that.
Okay. Yeah, because they have pigback books. And they have 10 books in a bag. So... And for the book club, they'll come in and they have a list, I guess, that they can go through and they can pick a book. They also get the 10 books in the bag. And they have... Mostly, they have... They have something about the author of the book. And then they also have the questions, which sometimes it can... When you're in a book club, you've read the book, now you gotta go look for book questions. It's like weird, like, oh. I found, you know, found some in the back of the book. Sometimes that's really easy. But then there's other times you just make up questions. So this is good. The book in the bag has the questions there for you.
Yeah.
So I didn't know whether you had that.
It's like independent, so... The library book, you mean like an independent, and something helps.
Yes.
Yeah. We don't offer anything like that here. There are libraries in the network that will circulate books in a bag, like you're saying. The staff already supports the library's book club that meets here and once a month has to order all those books for the members and then supports them in anything they need throughout.
New art books?
We do. We get the books for them from other libraries. Because we only typically have one copy. So between Sandra and Mary primarily, Mary primarily now, they place all the holds. They find out how many copies are needed. They place all the holds for patrons to get them. They make sure that they're here. They place additional copies to have on display. Yes, yeah, and that's a monthly...
Last book club meeting. Okay, I forgot the name of it already. Taleteller. And I'm still on the list, it's been two months. I'm number one on the list now. So I ended up, somebody got the book and they copied it.
Yeah.
So you have the second. That's the first time that's gonna happen.
Well, that's the other thing with the library run book... Well, that's the other thing with the library-run book club is that, well, it's not even a library-run book club. It's a library-sponsored book club. But the, you know, we have to make sure that when we're given a, a variety of titles from the book club, that we can make sure we can get those books for them in those quantities. Because if you're picking a brand-new book or something that was just recommended by somebody, you know, a celebrity.
Oprah.
Right, then of, of course you're active, because everyone in the network is trying to get their hands on that. So we, you know, that's why we have to have the staff working with the book club so that they can make sure.
Oh, they do any other book club? Like, I have a book club?
I don't think we're gonna be able to take on another book club at this time. I don't think so, because, I mean, we're, Sandra's supporting two book clubs that are held here at the library that she's in charge of. And then we have the, the monthly book club that meets here, that now Mary has sort of taken on ordering all those. And I can't imagine that we could support something else. I mean, if you gave us the titles in advance, we could tell you how many copies were in the system and, you know, what, what the hold queue was like. But I don't think we could take on supporting, especially since it's not a library-sponsored program. Um, I can look into book in a bag options. I mean, the only thing is if we buy it from one club and then the, the bag of books is just sitting there, where, I don't know where we would store them. I don't know, you know, that another club would want them.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we could also look into, if you had specific titles, we could find out if there are any libraries in the network that had that title as a book in a bag already set up. And we've seen them come through on hold plus.
Oh, really?
Yep, usually accidentally someone's placed a hold online and they don't realize they're ordering 10 copies of a book in a bag. And so then the kit arrives and that, they didn't, they didn't mean to do that. Um, but if you had a specific title, but if it's a, if it's a new book or something that, you know, has just been recommended, um, then chances are it's not available that way. So there's a lot of pieces that go into it. But we'd be more than happy to tell you whether or not there were multiple copies in the network and what the hold queue was.
Okay.
But if you're like reading Where the Crawdads Sing or Becoming or anything like that right now, but those books have like 600 holds, so. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do anything for you for that. But like, for example, the book club that meets here, they've been trying to read Educated for a really long time. And there's no way we can get multiple copies of Educated at once for them because there just aren't enough copies in the system and there's still so many other people trying to read it. So that's when, when Mary coordinated them, she's able to say, you know, well, let's try again in three months. Let's, you know, if you're willing, let's find something else and then we'll revisit this one later. I think they're finally getting on the calendar. Um, but that's been a long time coming, I think so.
But I'm looking into the book in a bag.
I see, I know, they've got one library that they go, like, they're studying, they're flipping. Is that the best of the 10 books?
I, I don't know. I know she said it because they, they're paid back books. They're paid back books and they're, it's 10.
It must be way around that.
But when you get it, now you can keep the books for six weeks. That seems like an awful long time, but sometimes, well, sometimes it's four weeks. By the time you, you get them, you go to the meeting, then you're a month. So now you've read them, but now you've got to collect them and make sure you get them all to get them back in the bag. So I guess that's why it takes six weeks.
Right.
It just seemed like it was kind of a waste, but, and I thought.
Keep books that long again.
Yeah, but I just thought I would.
Yeah.
My sister-in-law is also a library trustee of Franklin. And she had a few different things that she does, but I didn't write them down. The next time I see her, I'll ask her, but it was, she, suggestions.
Yeah, that's true.
Definitely.
Definitely, absolutely.
Anybody have anything else?
I had, um, just a report on our meeting of the Centennial.
Oh, okay, great.
That, uh, May 22nd, Jerry, Dana, and so, and Connie Russell. Who's here. Um, we met to at least just try to figure out where we're going with this. And we did decide to probably not do any major events till, till the spring of next year. Does that coincide with the actual opening of the school, or spring of 2020? And Dana put up on the Facebook page.
Yeah.
And on the Friends Facebook page.
So I, I shared it to the, yeah, I shared it to our library's page and Connie took care of sharing it beyond our library's page.
And we got one response, that's all we've had so far. Just one person responded. She had some pictures and some more information. She also gave me some contacts and more people that I could speak to, so it's a start. And we do have honey, uh, we're meeting again next Wednesday. And we'll see where we go from there. But if anybody has any information, pictures, stories, um, to share with us about anything they've done here at this building. It's an anniversary of the building, not of the library. All the communities in her, or the school, just the building, everybody who's used the building. So just get in touch with the library here, either email, email, or call, stop by. Whatever you hear, we'd be happy to look at it. At some point, we're hoping to set up a time to have people just drop by and maybe tell us some stories if they would like to do that. But we haven't set that up yet, so it's coming.
For you, anybody else?
I just have a couple of things from the director's report.
Oh, I would, I would.
Oh, okay.
I would shake it.
No, that's a fake. Now onto the director's report.
Just a couple of things.
No. Um, so I gave you the, um, statistics for May. And, um, if you take the 7,941 items, um, and then add the 200 items that circulated through the block, we circulated 8,141 items in May. Um, I did talk to the staff that are leading and I really, I, 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 I hope I don't jinx it by saying it loud, but I, I think we're gonna go over 10,000 items for the first time ever this summer. So I, I'm really, I, I'm like so excited for it. So, um, anyways, it's pretty, it's pretty neat to see that. So, um, but pretty steady everywhere else. Um, last year, we, um, you'll see there's sort of a dip in attendance for programs, but, uh, we had offered two really big programs last May, including the, the Band Out on the Back Lawn. So when you, when you think of it, you know, there, there's a slight drop, but we didn't offer those two big advances, you know, so, um, it's really not that big of a drop.
I think the difference in circulation.
I.
How does it? Like 20, is it 28%?
Big difference.
Yeah.
Big difference, so.
This rate, we will be each other.
I think it's, I think it's gonna happen. Maybe, maybe we can bet on that, Henry. We'll go to the lottery.
Great.
Um, but then in, in terms of the actual director's report, I just wanted to highlight a couple of the upcoming programs. Um, quickly, on Monday, June 17th, um, we are having an evening to celebrate Portugal in honor of the month of Portugal. Sandra's coordinated a really fun sounding night with music and, uh, some pastries, which are being provided by Melena Roderick, who's a local author. She came here to promote her book, uh, when it come out. And she'll be coming back, um, with some pastries on the 17th of June at 6 o'clock. I'm really looking forward to that. Spinup Publications will also be here. They have some, uh, books and DVDs on Portugal. So they'll be here to showcase some of those things that they offer. And then on Wednesday, June 19th, we're having a small book workshop for older teens and adults, uh, where you can, you know, take like an, an old calendar and make a book out of it. Um, so it's like a really neat program, um, that a member of the cookbook club will be offering. She's a library patron, longtime library patron and active library user. And she'll be here to, to offer this workshop for us. So space is limited for that, so if you're interested in signing up, if you're feeling practicing and you wanna come, the material is all provided. You just have to sign up in advance, um, by calling us or stopping in and, um, sign up for this small book workshop on June 19th at 6 o'clock. Um, the movie program for adults seems to be going really well. It's on Tuesday, the last Tuesday of the month at 2 o'clock. So the, uh, next one will be on the 25th of June. It's First Man. So that's sort of getting us into the, um, summer reading theme with the Apollo 11 tie-in. So it'll be showing on, on June 17th at 2 o'clock. Uh, like I've said, the summer calendar, complete, complete summer calendar, calendar will be available June 14th. And so I think that's, that's about it for my highlights. Uh, we were supposed to do no extra programming and you, and then Sandra, you're a achiever, decided to add on these two big programs. But no, it's, um, I'm very excited that we're, we're offering them. And I think the evening to celebrate Portugal will be a lovely event. So I'm hoping to have a good crowd for that.
Anybody else have anything they wanna talk about? Okay, is that the next meeting?
So between our summer schedule and I'm sure your summer calendars are active also. Let's see how hard or easy this is. Are the Wednesdays at 4:30 a pretty staple time typically for people? Just so I'm not ramming out a whole bunch of things. Um, so I'll put it this way, if you wanna meet at the very beginning of the fis, the start of the fiscal year, we can do that, or if you'd rather wait, so we get a few weeks into the fiscal year, I'm okay with that too. So, um, I preferably, um, would prefer to get us, um, towards the end of the month unless something arises that I feel I need, um, your assistance on. But, um, otherwise, I think maybe like July 24th, Wednesday, July 24th, or, um, even 31st, uh, would be okay by me. Um, 24th, I feel, just doesn't get us too far into things. But that works.
Would you rather do the 31st?
No, I'd rather do the 24th.
Okay.
Then we're not so far into things, but it's.
We get time for course group.
Yeah, right, right.
Does July 24th work for you?
At 4:30.
4:30, okay. Next meeting, July 24th at 4:30.
We do have a magic show at 2 o'clock that day, but they'll be cleared out by 4:30.
Hopefully.
magically, it'll be all cleared up by, by 4:30. You'll never know it was here unless you come back.
Okay, as we have no other business, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
All right.
This June 5th, 2019, meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is 5:13.